I call the October 9th, 2018 work session. This is the City Council to order. Madam Perk, would you call the order please?
Yes. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucasburg?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Mayor Row.
Here. Dr. Patton.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. This evening, the first presenter, Mr. Neil Armin, Chief Financial Officer of the Charmin Hotels, will present the plans for renovation of the Renaissance Hotel. Charmin owns and manages over 56 properties with more than 7,000 rooms and over 100,000 square feet of meeting and banquet space. His organization is recognized as the largest hotel management company in Virginia. The Renaissance Hotel is a jewel in the heart of historic Portsmouth. It wows guests with impressive Elizabeth River views, best enjoyed from each of the 244 guest rooms and five suites. With 25 well-equipped meeting rooms, the waterfront hotel offers business travel, prime proximity to the Portsmouth and Norfolk Naval bases, the Portsmouth Naval Hospital. With Mr. Armin this evening, from the Charmin Group, is Mr. Michael Sweeney, Vice President of Design and Construction, and Mr. Narash Patel, Regional Director of Operations. The second presentation, Fleet Financing, will be accompanied by a public hearing this evening. In the FY 2017, 2018, and 2019 adopted budgets, the city identified the need to finance approximately 10.7 million of vehicles and equipment. City staff worked closely with the city's financial advisor and bond counsel to take the necessary steps to prepare for the general obligation bond issuance in late October. Mr. Kyle Lox, Senior Vice President with Davenport and Company LLC, Public Finance, will deliver a presentation that describes the process, summarizes proposals received from financial institutions, and recommends the options Davenport and the city's finance team believes is the best option for the city. The third presentation this evening, Mr. Daniel Jones, Chief Information Officer, will provide a presentation on the Portsmouth Community Broadband Network, infrastructure or PCBN, RFP vendor cost proposals. These vendor proposals include the cost of construction, which is not all-inclusive of the network operations for the PCBN. With this evening's presentation, members of City Council, I would like to have your concurrence for the city staff to move forward to the next level of negotiations. Mr. Armin.
Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and Honorable Members of City Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you again today to give you an update on our plans with the Renaissance here in Portsmouth. I want to say that we've really enjoyed being part of this community. You know, I was speaking with members before the meeting, and I know we've had a lot of events at the hotels, and hopefully we've been embracing the community, and hopefully you've seen that. I know we've been out there with community members in terms of participating in charity events, and of course employing, you know, a lot of new associates at our hotel. But today, we're here to talk about, I think, what, you know, what's on your mind is, you know, the renovations at the hotel and when they're going to start. Before I do that, I was talking with Dr. Patton earlier today, and, you know, we were just conversing. She thought I should mention this point. I have two nieces that are getting married next year. One lives in Richmond, and one lives in Virginia Beach. And we have hotels in Richmond, in Norfolk, and Virginia Beach, and obviously Portsmouth, and both have chosen to get married at the Renaissance next year.
Ooh. It's the best.
And their vision, yeah, no, no question. And their vision is, you know, one has this idea where the bridal party will come on boat to the hotel and enter the hotel from the waterfront. So, you know, this was their idea, and this was their unbiased choice. So I thought I would share that today and show you the potential that the hotel has. And Madam Vice Mayor, I still remember the last meeting where you mentioned about having that drink outside the hotel, and we hope to show you that vision today and hope to make that a reality. So with that, I brought today with me Michael Sweeney, who's our Vice President of Design and Construction. He's been with Charmin Hotels since 2005. He's built and designed over, I don't know, 25, 30 hotels for us, very well-regarded in the industry. He's a licensed architect as well, so tremendous amount of experience. I thought he would be the right person to talk about the design of the hotel. So Mike?
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I'm not sure if, what you, here we go. Oh, super. So currently, this is the floor plan of the hotel. And what we're doing with the, if you've been to the hotel, you come down this very long corridor, and then you turn the corner and you get to the, to the front desk. And what we really thought when we first looked at this, when we first actually bought the hotel, when we first walked around it, was the large circular piece at the corner there that overlooks the water was always dead space. And so we thought, you know, this is a beacon. We've got all this across the river. We need to activate this and activate the outside. So what we, we've taken the approach with the hotel that instead of all these kind of segmented compartmentalized public spaces, we're really opening it up and really turning it into a very active first floor with a new 360-degree bar that will feed both the restaurant and the lobby and the lounge spaces between the main bar and this new beacon that we're adding, which is going to be this very cool little place that we're going to have specialty drinks and specialty events where people can make their own, well, not make their own drinks, but that would be fun. And I'm going to show you that. We're really excited about that. We really think that's going to be quite the draw because that is directly on the water, and it's probably one of the least-used spaces right now in the hotel with the best view. And this is kind of a blow-up of it. And we had this idea that, almost like a, like a lighthouse, kind of the Fresno glass kind of look, you know, the beacon calling out to everybody on the other side. And I'm going to go back to that in just one second. This is probably a little bit out of order. We are, well, let's keep going. We'll come back to that. So as you go down the hallway now, it's, we've got some artwork on the wall, and it's very light, and we're really trying to enrich in the hotel. So these are the schematic ideas of what we're looking to do, with a lot of, you know, a lot of screening into spaces, kind of leading to what's next, offering that excitement. So we're not looking at the dead-end space. At the very end there, this wall, this screen that you see, we're actually going to be projecting on it. So although it looks like, almost like a screen, it's going to be ever subtly changing with images, whether they be black and white of the old tall ships and so forth. Most of the photos that we have hanging in the lobby now will end up being projected onto these screens and down the hallway. Renaissance is a very interactive hotel. They bring a lot of technology into a very rich and vibrant space. This is the beacon. This is kind of the cool little jewel that we've created. Very relaxed place, very personalized service in terms of drinks. It's almost the anti-bar, where your drink is being served on the floor, not from behind the big tall bar. And we really think this is going to be a very, very highly-used, very cool place to, to come and have a drink after work or, or on the weekends. As we move further down now, a lot of this is just kind of, I almost want to say it's dead space. There's a lot of seating there, and we're turning this into much more of, of a lounge space where you can go in and out of these bar areas and the restaurant areas. The, a lot of the really nice features of the hotel, the, the arches and so forth and the wood trim, we're leaving all that and refinishing it because we really think it has a very nautical and, and rich feel. But we're taking it one step further with the, we're proposing that we will be looking at, almost like a glass-like material, but it's probably not going to be glass because we can't curve it that way, but, you know, to really kind of lighten these arches up. And the map here, this is kind of, this is Portsmouth, obviously, in the back there. And each one of these large glass rings you see is actually a magnifying glass that will be able to move over the map. So it kind of gives something rather neat. And like a lot of hotels now, we're getting away from the long reception desk, and we're going to the pod so that people have much more of a personal experience, so that the front desk receptionist can, you know, walk around quite easily and help somebody, so they have that one-on-one interaction. This is the main bar. If you've been in the space now, that bar kind of tucks up against a wall, and it feels like something that fell out of the 70s to a degree. And here, we're just, again, really want to open up the space, screen it, so that we can really activate the entire first floor. So it's not just a restaurant bar, or, sorry, a hotel bar. It's, you know, the whole area is, is an event space. The dining room, we're, we're updating this to have more of a, kind of, a modern twist. I like to call it kind of a Jules Verne look, but, but the same theme that we're carrying through. Now, not as exciting as the, the first part, but it's still quite nice. The ballroom, this is the main ballroom, we'll be actually renovating this and bringing this up to date with new finishes and so forth.
And that's the ballroom on the first floor?
Yes. This is the, the new look for the guest room. We're getting away from, we're going to a much more modern but very rich feel. We're getting away from the old carpet on the floors. It will have an LVT or simulated wood flooring with an air, a bound area rug over top. So really, more of a residential feel, something that you would put in your house. And we're working through some great details with Marriott, little things like the desk, these round things on the desk, that's really a valet to put your coat, you know. So that's the kind of level that we've been digging into this with Marriott. Just a much cleaner, much modern, very hip kind of look, a lot of individual pieces, not the big kind of clunky sofas that you typically will see. And, and the furniture's more of a, it's a, it's got a finer feel to it. It's not that, again, it's not that clunky hotel furniture. It's not going. Oh, there we go. And then back to the, I'll go back, this one that was out of order. So right now, the hotel, it needs an uplift on the exterior. And so we're kind of staying with the times, kind of, a lot of the design trends at this moment are going for darker colors with the warm reds and so forth, which works perfectly with the, with the brick. So this is what we're proposing to, how to update the exterior of the hotel. Would be new signage and a completely different color, which will really, by the way, help that sign pop up. And, and no longer is it that kind of, I almost want to say obnoxious red signs that we've seen so many times in hotels. We're really kind of getting away from that, much, you know, softer glow, glowing white to yellow signage. And that's what we're proposing to do.
Questions?
Yes, ma'am.
So what's going to be on the outside, on that patio, that's probably the best patio in town?
That patio, I'm glad you asked that because we're really going to activate that.
I think if you go back to the
Oh, I've gone too far?
Yeah, the first, the first slide.
There we go. So this kind of serpentine curve here, we're planning on reporing all this patio out here. And again, this whole first floor is about having one active floor, not all of these broken-up pieces. You go here for your lunch, and you go here for your drink, and you go there because there's nothing there. So we're really going to, we're going to really activate this. We have built-in furniture and, you know, lounge seating that's out there so that people can carry their drink and hang out by the water because you're right, it, right now, it's, it's not being used at all.
We have a, it's not shown here, but this whole space here has been designed, and we have a stage as well. So, you know, obviously for entertainment, it's a very, it's a small stage, but just for entertainment, or if somebody wants to have a wedding, get married out there right against the water, we'll have that as well. But then, this is also outdoor, all this space.
Yeah.
So that's all, what Mike is just talking about, the built-in seats, you know, fire pits, things like that, that would all be there outside on the water.
You'd be dining outdoors also?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's
If I had a point, right. That's all here, so that's all your dining, and this is all dining here, and then this is all your lounge seating.
Yeah. I think what you're showing there, those triangles are like sail, sail shades, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, so if you've seen those modern sail shades, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a tension covering, basically.
Are there any planned changes in the, the menu?
In the menu?
The dining?
Yes.
As in?
A good menu.
As opposed to a bad menu?
As opposed to a bad menu. Actually, yes, we are actually working on a new menu. In fact, we met two weeks ago regarding that. It's not been, we haven't nailed it down just yet, but yes, we are changing the menu.
It's going to be a whole new concept, you know? It's, it's going to be named, you know, have its own logo, have, you know, hopefully to drive locals there and not just hotel guests. That's the goal.
Which is really our goal with this whole thing about activating this entire floor, not, again, not being a dining area, a bar, and, and lobby. It's really just one large activity space.
It sounds like you want to make this a destination for people that are welcome.
Yes, and that, and that was, you know, the whole idea of the beacon when we first looked at it. We said, this is a beacon. We got, you know, bring people across that ferry over to here.
Lisa has a question.
There was previously some mention of a rooftop dining or rooftop kind of social space. Is that still in the plans or is that?
We, we have that, you know, can you open up for us for a slide? There's one that shows the, yeah, this whole space, and we looked at it, but structurally it can't, you can't put tables and chairs on top of it. It's just not built. So we did examine that, but unfortunately, maybe Mike, you can
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm going to get right into the weeds real quick. Unfortunately, when you do an assembly space like that, the loading is, is, it's about three times higher, three and a half times higher than what the, the snow and roof loading is. And so we, it's without an enormous amount of structural work to it, and that really gets into the guts of the hotel way beyond, so we had abandoned that idea.
Other questions?
Where do you start? So right now, we're, we're working through the final design with Marriott, hoping here soon, be prior to Thanksgiving, we'll get final approval on it. And then we have to go through a process with Marriott of building a full mock-up room, basically we'll call it a model room. We're mocking everything up where we got the room, and we build it as though we would. And there Marriott then comes in. Marriott's very particular, and they'll go through every little detail, you know, is this in the right spot? Is this the right size? Is this the right feel? And then we tweak that. And so hoping to start, if everything goes well, early next year with that whole, with the whole model room process.
And this will be done with minimal, I guess, for the guests that will be entering, any exclusions or any?
Yeah, so the way, the way we typically do renovations is we will close a floor at a time. You don't know where they're. They'll come off the back elevators, and we're very particular about hours because we have to obviously protect our guests. You know, if we do have something that requires a lot of loud work, we'll typically try to leave the floor below, you know, vacant, but, and obviously, we, we work in normal hours when we're making noise.
Excuse this if it's impolite to ask, but what is the order magnitude of this investment?
I'm not letting Neil respond to that.
Well, I think I saw the city treasurer here, so he needs to leave the room, please. I mean, you know, it's, it could be, you know, seven digits. I mean, it's, we haven't priced every single thing yet, but it's, it's very significant.
It's a significant investment.
And we're, we're actually, part of the model room process is actually, it's, it's vetting all these individual pieces because everything in this hotel is actually custom. So there's no running lines that we're purchasing when we, when we do this. So it's quite a purchasing task and does take some time.
Like, one of the things that we're doing is we're removing all the tubs and putting in all-new showers in every single room. So that, that's a huge investment itself.
It is.
You know, so that gives you an idea of some of the things that we're doing. And this designer that we hired, you know, Solano, they're based in Manhattan, he came up with a W brand. If any of you are familiar with the W brand, that was his concept. So he's very focused on creating that destination, having that food and beverage experience along with a great room experience. That's why we chose him, yeah.
Other? Well, we're just as pleased as can be. Thank you for investing in our great city and continue to invest.
Well, thank you for all your support and opportunity, and we're here for the long run, as I've said many times, and you'll see that.
Thank you for your time. It's my pleasure.
So because we brag about you, how many hotels now do you own?
We have 58.
58, and you still have the first one?
Yes.
Yeah.
As that.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to sell. I mean, that's, trust me, they have no intention whatsoever.
There've been some hotel sales recently.
Yeah.
I heard. At the beach.
Yeah, yeah, we're buyers, not sellers.
Thank you, sir, and thank you again for your
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, now we'll ask Mr. Kyle Lox, Senior Vice President with the Davenport and Company LLC, to come forward.
I'll wait until you come back.
All right. Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, nice to see everyone this evening. Again, Kyle Lox from Davenport. I wish in some respects our presentation was as exciting as the prior one, but I still think we have some good news to share with you. So we'll walk through that. Happy to answer any questions as we move along. I think as the city manager mentioned, the topic tonight is just simply to talk about some financing for vehicles that we have competitively bid out to banking institutions. We have those results for you, and we'll talk through sort of what we would ask of City Council this evening, as well as some of those results. So in terms of a summary, page number one here, what we're really talking about is about $10.7 million worth of vehicles. It really encompasses several fiscal years' worth of those vehicles, so we're able to sort of get some economies of scale, not necessarily finance every single year, and kind of group some of those together so we can kind of get this all knocked out in, in one fell swoop, so to speak, meaning from FY, meaning fiscal year 2017, 18, and 19. You can see the mixture there, the vehicles at the top of the page, 6.2 million of what we have termed service vehicles. I'm not sure it's necessarily the right term, but sort of short-lived vehicles, some of your sort of day-to-day rolling stock. And then 4.5 million of fire trucks that tend to have a longer useful life. So we've taken all of that into account when we set up the plan of finance and set up the way the loan will be repaid to ensure that it is within the city's policies, as well as within best practices, making sure we're not financing something for longer than its useful life. This will all be combined into a single general obligation bond. Again, that, that particular way of structuring of financing tends to be the most cost-effective, and certainly, given the city's strong credit ratings, we saw a very nice response from the banking community. Worked closely, obviously, with the city staff, city manager, and, and the CFO, and went through a competitive process to go out and solicit banks to put a bid in. And if you look at that fourth bullet point there, we actually got 12 different lenders that wanted to basically provide this financing. So I think before we even get to any of the interest rates, exactly the terms and conditions, that's a really, really nice turnout. Certainly, the city benefits from the competition there, and that's a nice statement about the, the comfort that lenders have with the city's overall creditworthiness. So before we even get to interest rates, exactly what we're recommending, the fact that we even got 12 bids is a very substantial amount of bids, and certainly is positive as we see it as outsiders in terms of lenders and credit markets and their sort of view of the city of Portsmouth. Bottom of the page there, maybe getting right to it, the lowest bid, meaning the best and lowest interest rate that was provided was 3.01%. It's going to be a 10-year loan, and all those vehicles will be repaid over that time period. Actually, two different banks gave us the exact same interest rate. We're recommending that we move forward with SunTrust because basically they were able to meet our timeline, they had all their credit approvals that they needed, and the repayment structure worked sort of exactly with what we wanted to do that, that way. So the lowest interest rate, again, 3.01, had two different banks at exactly the same level, and so SunTrust ended up being our recommendation, largely based on the fact that they were ready to go, can meet the timeline, have the credit approvals today so we can be talking to you knowing that they've said internally they're ready to go as soon as the City Council would make that decision. So on page number two, in terms of the summary, I think the top bullet point there, I've already said, as we think about the future, the loan can be prepaid, so it's a very favorable interest rate. Yes, or Mr. Mayor?
Didn't the new tax, federal tax law penalize advance refunding of bonds and kicks them into a interest bond?
Yeah, so what the
Where the income is, is taxed?
That, that's exactly right. And so, so what happened the end of last year was that new tax law, for all intents and purposes, we cannot advance refund anymore, which, which basically means, as we think about this loan, what we have the ability to do is prepay without having a lockout period. And so, say we get two, three years down the line, and for some reason we want to refinance it, there's an economic advantage in doing that, we actually would have that ability with this loan because there's not a, a typical, what I'll call call period or no-call period, like you might see in many of our publicly-issued bonds. So by virtue of doing this with a bank, they tend to be a little more flexible in terms of prepayment provisions. And so it's a good question, and, and one that by virtue of doing this as a bank loan ends up being a little more flexible.
At the end, I'd like to come back to that and ask your, your advice on what lies ahead on advance refunding.
Sure, sure. I don't, I don't know if we'll have much of an answer, but I'd be happy to, happy to, to address the question. And so again, as we think about the future, we'll have the ability to, to prepay the loan. There's a modest premium the first three years, about 1%, and thereafter with no penalty. I think the likelihood that this is refinanced within the first three years is not particularly good, and so we're not particularly worried about that first three-year period. But after that time period, to the extent that either interest rates are such that we can refinance for savings, or maybe we want to pay the loan off, whatever it is, we've got that ability without any penalty. And so this evening, what you'll be asked to, to do and take action on, as the city manager mentioned, is there'll be a public hearing that's required by virtue of the Public Finance Act, and that I believe is on your agenda. And then Bond Counsel Maguire Woods, working with the city attorney's office, has set up a, a resolution that sort of authorizes staff, the city manager, et cetera, to, to move to closure with, with SunTrust. We'd have that done basically in late October, and that, that would basically be the entire process. So we've gone through this competitive process, very nice interest rates. I'll also say, in the past 45 days or thereabouts, for any of you that watch interest rates and watch markets, rates have actually increased rather substantially for someone that works in, in that market every day. So what we have here is an interest rate that is fixed until, until we close. So we've got that ability. We're not necessarily worried about between now and closing what's happening in the marketplace. We've got a variety of additional detail in here, and Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to go through as much detail as you'd like, but I think what you see here on page three is just an overview of the bids. You can see how competitive it was. We've highlighted there in yellow the, the options that we really focused on. We're talking with staff and see, what you really see is a variety of options right there at 3%, all fixed through final maturity. So there's no rate resets, there's nothing of that nature. When we enter in this loan, the rate is fixed through final maturity. When we enter in this loan, the rate is fixed through final maturity, and that certainly gives us that comfort. Again, loan will be repaid over 10 years, and that's all been factored into sort of the budget and the cash flows, as we think about your financial policies, your FY '19 budget and FY '20 budget. We're working closely with CFO and her staff on those details. So with that, Mr. Mayor...
Because we have it, why don't you go ahead and summarize the rest of the slides that are in the presentation for us?
Be happy to.
And make sure that we don't have any questions, or if we do, we get a chance to ask.
Yes, sir.
I have a question right here while we're on this slide. I mean, why were some of the bank, other banks higher, like BBNT looks, seems to be the highest? Which is high.
Yeah, it's a good question. And so what we see when we do this, when we do a lot of this, it really depends on each loan and the structure of that loan, and the underlying credit of that loan, and maybe what other relationships the bank has with a given borrower in terms of how it gets priced. So there's not necessarily a whole lot of rhyme or reason to it, meaning from our standpoint, certainly there is internally to each bank. We're not necessarily privy to all those details, but that's why we like this competitive process, because ultimately, that's the way we know that we've got a nice market rate, is by getting as many bids as we can.
For the citizen looking at the chart, see, one of the interest rates is like 11 basis points lower. What were the other considerations in the decision?
Yeah, so good question. So maybe, you may be looking down here, Councilman Moody...
Wells Fargo.
Yeah, Wells Fargo, and there's obviously a variety of details behind all this, but Wells Fargo offered a rate that wasn't as long as we needed, and so that rate is lower, certainly, than the 3.01, but their financing was only for an eight-year time period. And so from a cash flow perspective, it's sort of the equivalent of taking, instead of maybe having a 30-year loan for your mortgage, squeezing into a 15-year loan. In the greater scheme of things, the cash flows of, as we think about your budget, didn't want to overburden the budget, knowing there's other critical needs. And the other piece I think with Wells Fargo is they don't actually lock that rate in until much closer to when you close. And so as I was talking earlier about how rates have gone up, odds are, between Wells Fargo and Bank of America is the other bank that tends to operate that way, they won't lock your rate in until basically right up to your rate of close. And so you'd be subject to, you know, as interest rates have increased the last couple of weeks, that rate would not actually be the rate. And we couldn't stand up here and say, you know, "Councilman Moody, Mr. Mayor, the rate is XYZ," because we wouldn't know that until we close.
Very good, thanks. Thanks, Bill, for pointing that out.
Yeah, so good question. So the variety of these pages, there's going to be a lot of cash flows, and so this is what we've gone through with staff to really understand and sort of structure the loans such that as we think about your overall debt profile, not just this one individual loan, but think about how this fits within your overall debt profile. That's something we're very much aware of and want to understand. And so what you see here is simply the cash flows, meaning payments, of the three best bids here, so SunTrust at a 2.99, that was a little bit shorter, a little more front-loaded, knowing that there's other needs coming down the pike. We said, "You know what, let's make sure we reserve some capacity for other important needs." That really is why we ended here at this option two, that still has the loan paid off in 10 years at a fixed interest rate, but has a little bit less of an upfront impact, knowing there's going to be other important needs to take care of. And the third option was to look at a 12-year loan, which from a useful-life standpoint, we didn't like quite as much, meaning a lot of these vehicles are going to turn over, certainly within 12 years, so we like the concept of getting paid off within 10 years. And so that's just simply a comparison of those payments, those cash flows, and that's kind of how we ended at that.
Speaking of the other vehicles, we know about the fire equipment, power engines.
Yes, sir.
What does the service vehicles consist of?
That is a whole variety of kind of rolling stock between, I don't pretend to know exactly off the top of my head, but it's everything from mowers to dump trucks to pickup trucks and...
Mayor, that list of service equipment was placed in the box. So it's in the council's box?
A box?
Yes, and you can look at it under the city manager.
It's a fairly extensive list of a whole variety of different types of equipment that way.
And all that equipment would normally last 10 years and...
Vehicles and larger mowers, but vehicles are within that timeframe.
That's right, that's right. And the way this is structured, it's probably a little bit hard to see there, but the fire equipment is repaid over a longer time period, and those vehicles are repaid over a shorter time period. So within the loan, we've set it up such that, say, for instance, a police car that's going to get turned over much quicker, we're paying that off faster, whereas the fire equipment that is going to last us longer, we pay it off over a longer time period. It's a good question. Okay, and so with that, we'll simply then say, as we look at page five, this is our existing, as we say, tax-supported debt service, meaning the existing debt that is repaid from the general tax revenues of the city, not water and sewer. It's basically everything else, including the pension bonds, and so you see what those, excuse me, payments are, and we've got this declining, generally speaking, declining debt structure, and that's going to be important as we think not only about this particular loan, but as we think about your future CIP and other important needs that are going to need to be factored in. We always like to start from a basis of where we're sort of layering on top of. And so we've got some decline here that we're able to work with, and we'll continue to work closely with your staff, with the city manager, with CFO, as we think about not only this loan, but certainly the future CIP. And so we start with that in terms of the existing debt service. And then you simply see here, it may be a little bit hard to see visually, but all we're doing is taking that existing debt service, meaning what we have on the books right now, and adding to it, and that little green line up there, that little green bar, that is the payments on this new loan, meaning the 10-plus million dollars. So this is the first option, which we didn't recommend. I'll take you maybe to this option that we did recommend, and from a timing perspective, we're right here in FY '19. You can see your first payment would not hit until FY '20. We've kind of tried to minimize that impact within your budget. We've worked closely with CFO to make sure we're all on the same page in terms of where the payments are.
Was the interest capitalized?
No, sir. We're sort of further enough into the year that the first payment can be set in the next fiscal year without doing anything in that variety. And so that is, that's the structure there, and you see how it layers in and pays down over time. Same thing for option three. I don't think I'll spend a whole lot of time there, because we're not recommending it. And the end of the presentation is simply a whole bunch of detail on the existing bits that I wasn't planning on walking through page by page, but certainly have it within your packet if there's any questions.
Other questions for Kyle? Getting back to the new tax law...
Sir.
And the penalty for advance refunding, which kicks them into taxable bonds, what is the chance to have that reversed? And what strategy? I mean, this has got the major blow for all municipal governments, whether you're town or county.
It takes, it takes a really important and valuable tool out of your toolbox. And so you, Mr. Mayor, know that from years here. You've been able to, as a city, save a bunch of money by virtue of being able to refund debt sort of, we'll call it, not any time you want per se, but certainly when the economic conditions work. And so to your exact question, what are the odds, I don't pretend to know.
Yeah.
But certainly, we hear from time to time about bills being floated, and the way Washington works nowadays, who knows? But certainly, you know, to the extent you're thinking about those things and talking to your legislators, that is, it is a tool that left your toolbox in December that's been valuable to the city and local governments across the state and the country, really, you know, historically, so...
And I think it's important for us to hear that, and for the public to hear it too, that this was a consequence of what was passed.
Yep. It was sort of contained within everything else that happened. It probably didn't get much press outside of our little world of municipal finance. And, yeah, it's been an important tool over the years. Now, the flip side of that is, by virtue of how low rates were, you know, up until, you know, really, it's still very low right now, but historically, we've been able to capture a lot of that savings along the way. And so as you recall, just back in December, we did a very nice refinancing, and kind of got it in under the window. And so in the short run, we're really very much on top of those refinancing sort of possibilities. So it's not as though we're sitting here saying, you know, "Gosh, we'd really love to go do something tomorrow," because we were able to take, you know, take advantage of a lot of that in December. But certainly, as we roll through the future, you know, it's reasonable to assume that if we still had that tool in our toolbox, that, you know, we could save some money at some point in the future by virtue of doing that. Unfortunately, it's not in our toolbox for the moment, so that's the world we've been given.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, Mr. Jones will come forward with the PCMB presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. As requested, our presentation this evening will focus on the financial methodology of the Portsmouth Community Broadband Network RFP proposal submissions. The agenda for this evening will include the PCM proposal overview, the evaluation criteria, the evaluation results, evaluation financing, and our recommended next steps. So the collaboration with the entities included both the internal stakeholders of the city, federal engineering, and our national broadband consultants, Magellan Advisors. We released the request for proposals, RFP, using the PPEA guidelines on April the 2nd of this year. The proposals were received back by the city on May the 18th. The proposals were then published on the city's website on August the 14th. We received proposals from the following companies: Cable Associates, Danella Companies, Decisive Communications, Intuit Communications, Team Official, and SNS Communications. All of the proposals were evaluated on this criteria, project characteristics, which includes the project definition, schedule, operation, technology, legal, and environmental impact, the experience and qualification of the company, including the experience in providing the requested services of what was in the proposal, the project benefit and capability, including community benefits, community support, and public involvement, the outreach efforts, which includes the MWBE participation, the project financing and cost, and of course, we arrived at the total score for each proposal. The evaluation financing, Cable Associates was the only proposal that offered a dual methodology, meaning traditional financing, as well as some type of PPA, PPEA arrangement. All of the rest of the proposals were based on a traditional financing, where the city pays the cost of the construction and the city owns it. Cable Associates redacted their financing as confidential information. Danella Companies, the proposal come in at 6.6 million, Decisive 9.9, Intuit 9.3, Team Official 7.6, and as you noticed, the SNS Communications come in at 2.4. Such a dramatic difference. But what happened there was, they only submitted a proposal response for a small portion of the network. They didn't do the entire network. Whether they didn't see the sheet, they didn't submit the sheet, no one knows.
Should I read the...
So our recommended next steps would be to go further with vendor negotiations, to start looking at terms and conditions and best and final offer, because what we released within the proposal does not include the design and architectural that we already have done. So most of the proposals are still equating a amount to do design and architectural, which has already been completed. As I said, to negotiate a best and final offer with the vendor, develop a comprehensive agreement, and then begin construction.
To tee this up for our discussion, my recollection is that we're building approximately 50 miles of a system...
Yes.
...at a cost of 8.3 million?
That is our...
All-in cost?
Correct, yes.
To include design?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simmons and I attended the VML meeting, and at the beginning of that, it's the Mayor's Institute, and they had a presentation by the Roanoke Valley Broadband Authority, which is a public authority, and they have built a similar system that's a little bit longer, but not by much, at a cost of 9.3 million. The soils are slightly different there than here, a little bit rockier. But a takeaway was, is that, and this is my word, that doing this infrastructure is this analogous to cities in the early 1900s putting down water sewer. If you were going to be an urban city, you needed to have a water sewer for economic development. And if you don't have broadband in the year 2018 going forward, people are going to pass by economic development. The presentation was so good, that personally, and your presentations have been so good, I'm ready to recommend to my colleagues that we go all in now and put the cash up to do it. It's that important. And so I'm not looking totally for a response tonight, but when we do talk about this, maybe the next, at the next meeting, we consider maybe doing that.
Yes.
Not maybe, but consider doing it. Now with that, questions for Mr. Jones? Do you want to respond to my comment?
And as I said, if, as you elaborated, connectivity is everything in the city and whether we do anything beyond eliminate or reoccurring cost, the financial makes sense just to eliminate our reoccurring costs, if nothing else.
Which is 20 million over the next...
If we do nothing, if we upgrade nothing, no more Wi-Fi, just what it is as it presently stands.
Just to kind of keep back on what the mayor said, the one thing that I felt really good about being in that mayor's meeting, there were a lot of mayors from much more rural areas than Portsmouth, and a lot of mayors from the western part of the state. But I felt very knowledgeable about the topic because of what we just discussed, and, you know, I know enough to be dangerous. But because of what you shared with us, I was at least keeping up with the presentation. And the other thing I feel better about, frankly, after seeing that and our discussions here, is that the majority of these proposals are for traditional financing, that they just build it, get a check, and go home. And I feel better about that, especially after listening to the Roanoke Plan. I think it's important we keep hold of it, just like our water system.
Because mostly it's going to be a carrier type that's going to offer service that wants to maintain that control, and we've got carriers already.
Thank you for taking our directive to make us a smart city and charge them forward and making us breathless to keep up with you.
Yes.
And that was our goal, was to be moving that quick.
Mayor and members of council, Mr. Jones and Mr. Ammons will continue to work with your, giving us the concurrence to continue to move, and we will come back either the last meeting in October or the first meeting in November.
Well, can we schedule it for the last meeting, even if...
Just an update, we definitely will come back.
Yeah, and to pick up on the thoughts that we talked about tonight...
Yes.
As people have a chance to think about it and ask you questions, let's not miss an opportunity at the next work session for us to capture all this.
We'll come back.
All right.
And I know that during the VML conference too, I wasn't in the workshop you were in, but I was in another workshop, and they mentioned about the possibilities of entering into private partnerships, and they kind of told us that we, you know, if you're able to do it within your own city, to stay away from those private partnerships. So I thought that that was good information, too.
Okay.
All right.
Next item.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I will go through... Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, I will go through the city manager's report. We have 11 items tonight, and then I will just give you an update on some of the report lines. The first item on the city manager's agenda tonight is contracting and financing for the pavilion repairs. The issue is an adoption of an ordinance to authorize the establishment of a project to repair the mast and replace the canopy at the Union Bank and Trust Pavilion, specifically by, one, establishing a new project titled Pavilion Mast Canopy Replacement in the Municipal Facilities category of the FY 2019 Capital Improvement Fund; two, amending Ordinance 2018-69 for the purpose of reprogramming the $1,715,000 in the local funding for the Paradise Creek Bridge project that was reduced by the said ordinance to the Pavilion Mast Canopy Replacement Project; three, recognizing interest of the proceeds of the city's Series 206C bond issuance in the amount of $224,000 as revenue and appropriating said funds to the Pavilion Mast Canopy Replacement Project; four, recognizing permit restricted parking revenue, Willett Hall, in the amount of $250,000 and appropriating said funds to the Pavilion Mast Canopy Replacement Project; five, transferring $150,000 from the City Gateways Project to the Pavilion Mast Canopy Replacement Project; and six, transferring $100,000 from the 801 Water Street Project to the Pavilion Mast Canopy Replacement Project; and seven, authorizing the sole source procurement of Span Systems Incorporated for the replacement of the canopy.
Let's pause there.
Okay.
Any questions on this? This lashes together several different sources of funds and puts them into the project.
That's right.
What we didn't have to spend on other CIP projects.
That's right.
We're cleaning up CIP, yes.
Any questions?
Does that cover it all, or we still have to come up with additional funding for it?
We need additional funding for it. Where's Mr. Wright?
Boss.
Yes, Mr. Wright. All right, Mr. Wright, I thought it was 3 million. This is, all right. I thought, yeah, I think we will be coming back to you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. What this does is it gives us the project funding for the project minus contingency, so we may have to come back to you for some contingency funding once we get a little bit further along.
Right, okay.
All right. How about where we stand on pursuing any insurance?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, we have put everyone on notice in our schedules for our various carriers who have inquiries about the process. No one has, they're all waiting the mast to come down to kind of take a look at it, but we have put everybody on notice, and we continue to update them regularly about the number of issues surrounding it. So, as we've become aware, to the extent that we've had folks that have made some sort of indication that they may be making claims, we're passing that information right along to risk management, so all of our carriers are aware at the same time.
So, stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
A little bit longer.
All right, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, item number 18-381, I'm requesting to City Council to defer this item so that city staff can further vet the source of matching funds for this particular mobile command, control, and communications system electronic infrastructure.
Dr. Patton, when we get to that point, Matt Clark, I'll ask you to read the caption of the ordinance, and then I'll ask for a motion from Council to defer this to our next meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, assuming that there'll be a motion in the second...
October 22.
Yes. October 22.
October 23rd.
So, the motion will be to defer, and that's, okay. Everybody in agreement?
Yes. The next item is FY 2019 Local Emergency Management Program Grant: Adoption of an Ordinance Accepting a Local Emergency Management Program Grant in the Amount of $57,992 administered by the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and Appropriating Said Amount in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for Use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services. The next is a, and these will be, I think, five items that will come before you. The title is Grant Fund Portsmouth Public Schools PPS: Reappropriation of FY 2018 Unspent Grant Funds. The issue: Adoption of an ordinance to reappropriate unexpendanted funds from the FY 2018 Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund Budget in the total amount of $126,908 into the FY 2019 Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund Budget. The next, the title: Reappropriation Unencumbered FY 2018 PPS Funds to the FY 2019 CIP for School Capital Improvements. Issue: Adoption of an ordinance appropriating $1,653,636 to the James Hurst Elementary and Churchland Primary and Intermediate Elementary Schools Classroom Projects in the Education category of the FY 2019 Capital Improvement Fund Budget. The next title: Textbook Fund: Reappropriation of School Textbooks Funds. Issue: Adoption of an ordinance to reappropriate unexpendited funds in the total amount of $3,661,144 from the FY 2018 Textbook Fund Budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools to the FY 2019 Textbook Fund Budget for Portsmouth Public Schools. The next title: General Fund: Reappropriating Encumbered FY 2018 PPS Funds to the FY 2019 PPS General Fund Budget. Issue: Adoption of an ordinance to reappropriate encumbered but unexpendited funds from the FY 2018 Portsmouth Public Schools PPS General Fund Budget in the total amount of $604,930 to the FY 2019 PPS General Fund Budget. The next title: Risk Management Fund: Deposition of Unexpendited Funds from the FY 2018 PPS Risk Management Budget. Issue: Adoption of an ordinance to appropriate $5,189,613 in unexpendited funds from the FY 2018 Risk Management Fund Budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools PPS to the FY 2019 School Board Risk Management and Insurance Fund established by Section 2.2A of the City Code for the purpose of establishing a reserve for the PPS Health Self-Insurance and Workers' Compensation and General Liability Programs.
Dr. Patton, if you'll pause right there.
Okay.
I might ask my colleagues on Council to look at this sheet of paper that's before you. It's a copy of Section 2.2 of the City Code, and Mr. City Attorney, it appears that this was enacted as early as 1973. Is that correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
That's right. So, that's 45 years ago.
Certainly.
Look at the first sentence of A: "The School Board Risk Management and Insurance Fund is hereby created for the purpose of providing a reserve source of funding." So, this fund was created 45 years ago. And then, look at B, the first sentence: "Annually, as part of the budget process, the City Council shall appropriate..." Shall is a mandatory word, is that not?
Correct.
Correct. So, this, Dr. Patton and Mr. City Attorney, this is a standalone fund that's separate from the general fund. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that the city manager has no authority to make any transfers out of this fund for any purpose, to include buying...
Anything.
Erasers at 10 cents apiece. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that even the City Council, if it wanted to use it for some other purpose, would have to amend the City Code to do so. Is that correct?
Certainly.
And that the difference between public accounting and private accounting is that in the public sector, we have funds, with our largest fund being the general fund. This is a companion fund that runs separate from the general fund for the purpose. And lastly, that the disbursement shall be for the purpose of the school board risk management and insurance, when the demand for such disbursement is presented to the city manager with appropriate documentation, and then it becomes a managerial act. And note that any claim greater than $100,000 directs the city attorney to consult, not with City Council, but with the city school board. And so, it's about time in 2018, we finally are adhering to the City Code. This fund's been in existence. It's been part of our CAFER, and we're required by this ordinance to make the appropriation, and that's what we're doing tonight. And so, in your correspondence to us, the school board already has in its budget for 2018, 2019, the sum of $19,619,636,800, almost $20 million. This appropriation, which goes into the School Board Risk Management Fund of $5,189,613, will give a grand total of $24,826,413 that's available for the schools to use for risk management insurance payments for the current fiscal year.
Workman's compensation.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Workman's compensation.
And that this is a bright, ironclad appropriation that cannot be undone. It's restricted funds once it gets appropriated. And in no way does it put in jeopardy the school's risk management fund? That's a question to you, Dr. Patton.
No, it doesn't, because the money is there.
Does it put in jeopardy the school employees' health insurance?
No, I would say no.
Because it's already covered in the 19.6.
Yep.
What it does is put the school board fund, risk management fund, on steroids, because this is a 25% increase. I think this is a good, good appropriation. It meets the request of the school board. It puts it for that purpose, and it meets the requirements of our City Code.
That's it.
Any questions? Bill?
School board and superintendent, have they been briefed on this?
Dr. Patton?
The school board, the city manager, the interim CFO, and me, Dr. Bracy called in, I think it was last Wednesday, for a call of which we discussed the risk management fund, and moving forward with what the code says is what is being proposed here.
And before you, too, if I may, Bill, is a different ordinance than the one that's in the package.
Yes.
Because this one now has the nomenclature.
Yes, that's what, and this one has the nomenclatures in the code.
Pass that to clerk, so you can...
We want to have copies in the box inside the chamber and also...
What I'd like for you to do is read out loud the caption for this ordinance.
Yes.
I have other items.
Go ahead.
An ordinance to appropriate $5,189,613 in unexpendited funds from the FY 2018 Risk Management Fund Budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools to the FY 2019 School Board Risk Management and Insurance Fund established by Section 2.2A of the City Code for the purpose of establishing a reserve for the PPS Health Self-Insurance and Workers' Compensation and General Liability Programs.
And I know that you read it, but I thought it would be good to have the clerk read it after we had gone through the process of looking at collectively that section of the code, the fact that the fund has already been established 45 years ago.
Yep.
And that it directs us to make the appropriation. Bill?
What has been the practice, I know the code was established 45 years ago, what has been the practice during those 45 years?
It looks like we've honored it in the breach, really.
Well, that's, can you speak, Asher?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, in terms of the fund being supplied, it appears that the risk management fund has not been accounted for, I would say, in the last several years. Has been the issue with regard to accounting for risk management funds. There's probably been an ongoing discussion between the city and the school system about those risk management funds. There was a discussion two or three months ago also with regard to that. With this particular incident, again, we're talking about last year's funds. If you look at the budget, last year's budget and this year's budget have roughly $19 million for the health plan and risk management fund as requested by the school system. That $5 million has been, for lack of a better word, off the books up until this point in time. And so, this puts it available to the school system, but it puts it above the line, as you would say, because we're talking about an additional $5 million available for the 2019 budget, if that need should arise.
I'd answer your question. Pardon me.
What, you mentioned that you had a conversation with the superintendent. How about with the chairman of the school board or members of the school board?
No, I haven't yet.
She wouldn't.
No.
But I got an email today from the chairman of the school board asking that we defer that, and I responded with the email that you all got, and I responded to everybody that explains exactly what the City Code does, what we're doing. There's a lot of misinformation that's been floated around, that this puts the employees' health insurance at risk, and it does not.
It doesn't.
It increases their risk management budget, as defined by them, by 25%. And because of this great amount of misinformation and the fact that most likely we'll have agenda speakers, I'd like to give this same scenario. After we have the clerk read the caption, we'll get the motions put on the table, and then explain the fact that we have this constitution that's 45 years old, that establishes this as a separate fund, that's restricted for school board risk management, and directs the City Council to appropriate the funds, that gets drawn down only by the school superintendent requesting the funds, with the caveat being that any request greater than $100,000, the city attorney's got to consult with the school board. And hopefully, we can have the speakers just direct their comments to the facts and not the misinformation.
So, in essence, this $5 million will be in a lockbox...
Yeah.
...that can only be used for risk management on the part of the school system.
That's a very good way, yeah. That's a very, very good way to put it, lockbox.
That's it.
I can't remember what year it was, but just in the last few years, when Treasurer Jerry was still on the council, there was some talk about combating some funds and self-insurance. And at that time, I can remember Councilman Jerry sitting here saying, "Well, let's put aside a million dollars," so, and I can see him sitting here saying, wherever he is, "I promise you, we'll put a million dollars aside, so if you have an issue, we'll have it for you." Well, that's exact, which we all agreed to and thought it was a fine idea. That's exactly what this is, but in a much bigger fashion. And I think, I mean, to have 25% on top of what we've appropriated for that is a wonderful cushion, should we have some deluge of claims for whatever reason. I think it's great, and it's, like Bill says, in a lockbox. It's for one purpose, for three things: self-insurance, workers' compensation, and general liability. general liability. And none of us get to talk about it again. It's not ours to, nobody, we don't get to fiddle with it.
That's right.
Okay.
I have more items, please.
Dr. Patton?
I have more items.
Okay.
All right. Title: Bond Issuance of Vehicle Finance. Issue: Adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance of up to $10,900,000 in City of Portsmouth, Virginia, general obligation bonds, and setting forth the form, details, and provisions for the payment thereof.
So we'll have the public hearing, we'll take public comments at the beginning of the meeting, and then, at this point on the agenda, we'll consider the bond resolution. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Title: Sale of Portion of Spite Run to the City of Suffolk for Improvement Along the North Side of Route 58. Issue: Adoption of a resolution authorizing the conveyance of a 0.204 acre portion of the Spite's Run Reservoir to the City of Suffolk and related easements to the City of Suffolk Dominion Energy, Virginia, and Verizon, Virginia, LLC in furtherance of the widening and improvement of Route 58, and further authorizing the city manager to execute a sale agreement and all deeds and other documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution.
Can I say this tongue-in-cheek to my colleagues? Why don't we do a land swap here? I mean, Spite's Run is pretty valuable. Why don't we trade that for Ola Harbor View?
That's what he said to me. I have another one.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Title: Sale of Portion of Spite's Run to the City of Suffolk for Improvement Along, that was the north, this is the south side of Route 58.
I'll take that, Chuck.
Issue: Adoption of a resolution authorizing the conveyance of a 0.239 acre portion of Spite's Run Reservoir to the City of Suffolk and related easements to the City of Suffolk Dominion, Virginia Energy, and Verizon, Virginia LLC in furtherance of the widening and improvement of Route 58, and further authorizing the city manager to execute a sales agreement and all deeds and other documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this That concludes, Mayor and members of council, the 11 items that are on the city manager's report. You have received some emails in regard to, from our citizens regarding Carney Farm Lane. And I'd like to give you all an update on that matter this evening. The resident...
Just for everybody's, this is a briefing on Carney Farm Lane by the city manager.
Okay. The residential construction of Carney Farm Lane was approved through the city site plan process. Development review criteria for the site plan included zoning, Chesapeake Bay preservation area, storm water management, and other applicable ordinances and standards. During the review process, the project was reduced from four single-family homes to three single-family homes because of environmental constraints. The developer has obtained all permits required per the approved plan. Erosion and sediment controls have been installed to delineate the buffer for the resource protection area as required. Similar to all permitted land disturbing activities, the project is being inspected a minimum of every two weeks in accordance with the city erosion and sediment control program. The site has been in compliance during each inspection period. Other activities will be inspected as required by the nature of the associated permit. Activities that do not conform to those specified in the plan and what I have shared with you tonight, members of council, will be subject to corrective action immediately.
Is it correct to say that this is a subdivision that got in before we changed the subdivision, the law?
Yes.
Right behind you.
Just, yes and no.
Yes.
Yes.
So, so that plan was grandfathered prior to the code change?
I'm going to ask Mr. Baldwin if he would speak briefly to that.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of council, yes, to answer your question, this is a vested project that was in the process prior to the change of the code that was recently done by city council.
All right.
In summary, what you're telling us is that the developer is meeting all the requirements of the law?
The developer is meeting all of the requirements of the law, and we continue to answer questions and share what information as we share with you, with citizens who call, who may say this is what, whatever, but we let them know. It has been inspected, and they are within compliance. Okay? Just to follow up on our report backs from September 24th and 25th, these items, Mayor and members of council, are being worked on by staff. For example, the meeting with the joint city council supplemental retirement board with those issues or items that came up, both Mrs. Spivey, Mrs. Gooden, and city attorney Ashby are working on them. We have come back tonight with the Portsmouth Community Broadband Network, which you asked to talk about the cost comparisons. The public utility overview project, you asked for a master quadrant of that downtown area, you received that the next day after this meeting. On the 25th, there was no action for the joint land use study. The Atlantic Wood Industries issue, which you asked us to look at with distinguish who the land around the bridge belongs to, and determine where the tax line stops for Portsmouth, city attorney, and his team's working on that. The zoning application process for Thursday, you remember we had to cancel that, that is rescheduled for November meeting. There was no direction to move forward on the no cash bail issue. And I have reached out to, and this was what Mrs. Lucas Burke called to our attention, that's with the Swanson Homes, that PRJ was asking, what is the city's plan? I've reached out to Mr. Bland, but I've not been able to have a meeting, and we have a meeting scheduled, and we have put that on the agenda. We have a joint meeting that's scheduled, so we'll get back to you on all of those. That concludes my presentation.
911, any status report on that?
I will, we are moving forward, those individuals where we said, and Mrs. Goodness, y'all let her speak. Give it to her. And she's working with that team, with the folk...
For everybody's benefit, we've had some complaints and people calling and not getting an answer when they call 911. We ask the city manager to look into this.
Right.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the city manager indicated, we are working together, the fire chief, the police chief, and myself, to, some of the things we've done to help that is, we have about six or seven individuals that were working in a light duty status in the police department. They're actually helping out in 911, answering some calls to help alleviate, so that our 911 dispatchers can just respond to our regular emergent calls, so we have that ongoing. One of the biggest things I could say we have, we have the capability to report is with our recruitment efforts, previously what we had to do, candidates, they would come in for testing. They did a test called Critical, that tested some different capacities, decision-making, answering calls, and usually we would have to bring them in and test them. With the newest technology, we have the capability now to, as the candidates come in, we actually can test them, we can send them a link, and they can take the test at their home. And that way, if they pass the test, we will then subsequently invite them in, they'll do a confirmatory test, and then we'll actually have the interview. So that is a really big improvement for us in that regard. So we really look to get that done. We currently have, I believe, about 13 vacancies. We received 183 applications, and we believe with all the applications that we receive, we will be able to fill all of our existing vacancies, which is really going to help. It's still going to take the dispatchers anywhere from about six to nine months to actually, you know, go through all the training, VISA and NCIC, but it's actually really good in our regards. So something that usually took a much longer time, and staff resources will be able to take care of in relatively short time.
Harvey. Any questions?
I have two more comments.
Yeah, right.
Have there been an indication of why there were so many vacancies?
Oh, I gave you an article at our last meeting, and it's a national, that was a lead article the day before our meeting in the USA Today. Dispatchers across the nation, be it both police and fire, people are just not staying with those jobs, and they had many factors as to why.
So nothing unusual, it's just a...
Yeah, it's just, it's a national issue.
...job, the shift work and things like that.
That's right. That's right.
The stress from the calls.
Stress, right. In addition, I want to let you know that we are working with information technology on the process for the 311, which is an information line, which most cities have, and not citizens having to call the 911 to ask a question. So we're working on that, and we'll keep you posted on that. Okay? All right. That concludes my report.
This brings us to council ladies on reports, Mr. Boarder. I don't have any to see. Mayor?
I have a couple. Number one, Economic Development Authority, because of the state of the schools function that's this coming Tuesday, the 16th, at the admin center at 8:00 AM, I'm, we, the EDA has...
It's camp, right? Oh, excuse me a minute, Mr. Pace?
Yes, I was informed today that that ceremony is going to be put towards the end of the month, so the 16th is not going to happen.
Well, the EDA meeting was moved from Tuesday to Monday to accommodate that, which I was going to announce. I assume that is still the case, at 8:00 AM on the Monday in this room as opposed to Tuesday. I would also like to say that Mayor Rowe and I attended Virginia Municipal League Mayor's Institute last Saturday and Sunday on the peninsula. It was great workshops with other mayors and vice mayors from around the state, and in addition to the broadband information, we, we talked a lot about communication, communication with citizens, communication between the city manager, the city attorney, and the mayors, and staying in our lane, so to speak, and that's why you got the cute little car.
Two cars, thank you.
But it was a really, and we got pretty certificates when we left. That was great. I'll leave the rest for the mayor, but the other thing I wanted to bring up, which is not really a liaison report, but while we're, I don't want to forget, when we meet again on the 23rd, that is usually the meeting that we wear our pink shirts to raise awareness of breast cancer from the fire department. Last year, we wore navy blue t-shirts with the pink print on them. In years past, we've worn sweatshirts. Maybe it's weather permitting, and Mr. Smith may need a shirt.
Okay.
Because I don't own pink.
We have something good in it.
Madam Clark, can you take care of Councilwoman Smith?
Maybe just a day or two before, we'll decide whether it's the t-shirt or the sweatshirt.
Okay.
It's still 90 degrees outside, and that's all.
No, no other reports. The VMAI I did attend, and I found it very informational. Our mayor represented us very well as the chair of the finance committee, giving a report, and also changing some of the amendments. We were proud of him for adding that information in for the equal rights amendment. That was a big discussion on the floor, so we appreciate the language that you gave for them to submit for that. But it was very informational. I was appreciative of being in the session.
Bill? The last week of September, the Wednesday of that week, the Hampton Roads, federal facilities, and military alliance, what's called HUROMFA, and that's a public-private organization in which retired Navy Admiral Quigley is the executive director. We went to the Pentagon to meet with senior, very senior civilian and military leaders about the status and the future of military installations in Hampton Roads. And to give you some idea who was there, the Assistant Secretary of Defense, and there's only four of those, they report to Jim Mattis, the Secretary of the Air Force, the Deputy Commandant of the Coast Guard, and then a whole plethora of general officers. And the report back, you know, we're concerned about the next round of BRAC, and what BRAC could do, and the report back we got from the highest level is that there's no political stomach right now to, to push for another BRAC. We're concerned about capital needs of our facilities. And before going up there, I talked with the commander of the shipyard, and even though Congress has appropriated $20 billion for the four shipyards to bring them into this century, we have this type of situation where delivering a ship on time from a shipyard is a big deal. And for public shipyards, the Navy's four, they do that 55% of the time. For private shipyards, it's even worse. It's 35% of the time. And so with all this rain that we've had, we have leaky roofs over in the shipyard.
Yes.
Over buildings that do nuclear work, and the shipyard commander's got to take a crew off of a ship that's being repaired to put them on the roof. And so he leaves, loses a day of productivity. So we emphasize the need for that money to stay in the budget. That's $20 billion. Hampton Roads sector for the Coast Guard is located at the Portsmouth Coast Guard base, and you don't have to have much of a pitching arm to stand at its front door and throw a ball into the water. And so it was very much in harm's way. It had that most recent hurricane hit us, and no telling where they would have to evacuate. Plus, even in good days, their operation is bifurcated with part at the base and part in downtown Portsmouth. That would be like Solomon having half of his staff here and half of his staff in Churchland. And they're programmed to get a new building in the year 2023. So we talked, I talked about how we could possibly move that up, and what is the possibility of, and I said this might be harebrained, of doing a joint-use facility, where in a situation like that, it could become the emergency operations center for the state, for the ports, for Portsmouth, for Nofa, and for the Coast Guard, understanding the security needs of everybody, so that we don't get in each other's way. But here's, here's an example of why that's important. With the hurricane that came to Galveston last year in Houston, the Coast Guard sector there, because it was in a new hurricane-proof building, was able to open the port in three days. And had that hurricane hit Hampton Roads, it would have taken out all navigation aids. It'd be like us trying to travel the interstate with no traffic signs, no directional signs. And our port is too important to this country when a box can come in to Portsmouth and 24 hours later be in Chicago, when six nuclear aircraft carriers are located right here in Hampton Roads. This is a really important port. And so it's that type of conversation that we had with the leadership there. Then after that, we met with the congressional delegation. In some ways, it was like a preacher turning around and preaching to the choir, but it was beneficial. And one of the important takeaways was the BRAC thing. And one of the important takeaways was the BRAC thing.
Very good.
Any other business for the good of the order tonight? Okay.
Do we need this closed session?
We don't have a closed session, I don't think, do we?
It was in the box.
It was in the box? Bill, do we need it? Okay, with that, I adjourned, the work session, we're being at 7:00 a.m.